Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, we will begin with the minutes of our July fifteen meeting. Is there any addition or corrections there?
Second back.
Yeah, we've got a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to approve the minutes of the July fifteen meeting, all in favor, if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Uh, first up is from the Health Department, Mr. Matt Shirk and Missy Kavanaugh.
Actually, this is just for Missy, so I'm just here for moral support, so.
Um, we are asking permission to use, um, we're wanting to have another health fair, but we want to extend it out to health and safety here this year. Um, we're aiming to do it on September sixth, from, I think, nine to one, we want to shoot somewhere between twelve and one, but we want to do it in the back parking lot where we did it before and now we got front road too. So, we will be doing it the same day. Um, I think it's going to be the last farmer's market day, and I already spoke to Stephanie, and it shouldn't impede on any of them over there, so she pretty much welcomed it and just basically asked them for permission to put it on.
Did you say one to four?
What's that?
One to four?
No, nine to one.
Nine to one.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to approve the Health Department using the parking lot out here for Health and Safety Fair on September the sixth, nine a.m. to one. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Now, do you need any volunteers for that?
No, not really, I don't think so. I've got like about, yeah.
I was going to offer you a couple.
Um, I, I have about fourteen vendors already responding, so I got a pretty good start on, um, on the people that are returning. Um, I'm trying to reach out to Sheriff's Department and the Fire Department, so we kind of want to have like, um, EMTs are going to provide a touch the truck type program where the kids can go up and touch the truck, because during this health fair, we're going to offer, um, um, the flu vaccine and also school immunizations, so kids, you know, because usually the kids don't have them all done by the time school's started and everything. And especially right now, we are, we're waiting on our state vaccines, so it's kind of put a little pause right now, but they're on their way, so that's, it's just going to be another opportunity to have an open clinic, um, to provide the vaccines. So, we're trying to get all ages there to, to engage in it, so.
That's good.
Well, it's always gone well before, and I expect it to this time also.
Yeah. Hope to, please.
Yeah.
That's it, that's all I got.
Okay.
All right, thanks. County Clerk Don Hughes is here for one forty-four request. Don?
Aye. So, I have two people resigning in the last couple of weeks, um, right before I left on vacation, and I was able to fill those positions. One's a part-time, um, and one is a full-time child support. She had her last days Friday. So, I have two, one forty fours, one's for the voter registration, Deputy Clerk, her name's Robin, um, she is going to be able to start September fourth. Um, she works for a DNA farm now, that's given her enough time to give her them in two weeks, they got to do a month on our schedule. And, and then I have my full-time is Jackie Richardson, and she can start August twenty-fifth.
Move to approve.
Second back.
We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to approve the one forty-four request, Clerk's Office, our one part-timer and the one full-timer, right? Don?
Yes, and I need it, because the, the child support's a lot.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Three ayes, Jane. There you go.
You go, it's awesome, thank you.
Um, is Dave Rickman here?
Down there.
Well, there you are. Dave, did you have anything today?
Oh, a little bit. If you remember, a few, a few months ago or so, you know, about six months, I think, about saying that we would like to try to get somebody up there to help wash some animals and, and, uh, you know, even if they want to start anything, you know, on their own, you know, uh, and that's why we're trying to, and we found somebody that would do it. They'll wash our animals for free, and then they'll start, you know, like a little client thing, and she already signed our waivers, and she has waivers for, for her people to sign, and she'll have the insurance. Uh, this is, uh, Hannah Gross, uh, she's the one that was interested in it. Uh, you want to come up here for a minute?
Well, Jeff's not here, so I got to act on his behalf. He had a hearing, by the way, he'll be here as soon as he can.
If you have any questions you'd like to ask her, uh, that's why I had her come in, just in case, so you can, you know, I can introduce you to her. And she just graduated out of the, out of the dog room, and I think, and she's been volunteering for the last six months up there doing her animals, and she does a good job, and she cleans up after herself. That's a big thing. You know, so, this is Hannah.
Hannah, good to see you.
You too.
Uh, I saw you come in, and without, with never meeting you before, I didn't know who you were, but, uh, I talked to you on the phone the other day about this, and I think, did you ever get a hold of Dale Muntz?
I did not.
I never called her back, because she talked to you. So, that's why I didn't call you back, because he told me he'd talk with you.
All right. Um, our county attorney is not here yet, he's in court right now. The, um, if I understand this correctly, Dave, this would not be a free service to the pet owners, would it?
Not, not with her clients, no. Our, uh, our goal would be free, that somebody just wants to come up and wash their own animal, it'd still be a donation to us.
Uh-huh.
Her donation would be keeping our animals cleaned up and, and using our facilities. Her clients would, she have her own shampoo and all this, have her own clippers and all that. She just using our facilities at this time.
Okay. Well, as I explained to Hannah, since she is going into the pet grooming business, if we allow her to use our facility for that business, then the county would be subsidizing her in that business enterprise. Her competitors, no doubt, would claim that was an unfair arrangement. They, they would certainly have the right to expect the same treatment, or totally object to the county being involved in a private enterprise of that nature on county property. Um, I wish our attorney was here right now, so that we could address this through him, but, uh, I'm going to guess that he would advise us against making an arrangement like that for those purposes.
It's, I think it's in our handbook that it would be, we can't, we wouldn't be able to do that, it's in the handbook, I, yeah. It would be for that.
Sorry.
I mean, it's nothing against what you're doing, I'd love to be able to support you and help you, but yes, it definitely would be going against what our guidelines are for handbook.
I don't know that.
Um, I can communicate, I'll, I can email you that, so you can look at that, too.
Now, if you was off right now, your dad's garage that he's not using, um, that would be a different story. Um, but i- if you, if you two want to hang around until Jeff Wesling gets here, we could go into this more, get more of a legal, uh, perspective to it. Now, that's, that's, I can't see it being legal for the county to do, to do one thing for one business and not do it for the others, you know? And it might be illegal for us to do it for any of them.
Well, that's, you know, only way to find out is ask about it.
Yeah. Um, now, don't misunderstand me, Hannah, I wish you well in your business enterprise. Um, and we all appreciate the volunteer hours you put in up at the shelter. Now, this might be, if you could invite, uh, pet owners there to another location for your services, that would be something quite different, and that, it wouldn't involve act, the actual operation of a private enterprise on county property.
I need to think about that part.
Um, I don't even know how many dog groomers we have in the county now.
Uh, I think there are, what, about two in Hanola right now.
Now?
Yeah, that's, people teat, and up there in Beeson.
Up there, mine was great, too.
Yeah, there's, well, she only, uh, the one up in Beeson only does small dogs, and Mary in particular, about who she does for.
Um, did Jeff give you any idea of when he would be down from court?
No, he said he had a hearing and he'd be here as soon as he could.
Okay. Well, if you feel like hanging around until county attorney shows up, we'll pick this up with him today, right here, you know? Let's, do you two have anything, any thoughts or feelings about it?
I, myself, I like the idea. I, I think if there's a way that we can help her, we need to try to, see if we can't help her. I don't know exactly the legal side of how to do that, but I think we, we need to try something if we can.
Well, I certainly don't want to do anything to hurt her, you know? But at the same time, we don't want to get the county into
Right, we've got to protect his.
...legal squabble with other business interests.
Like I say, you can stick around, talk with Jeff, and he can give you an idea.
Okay. I guess we'll wait, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Now, if you remember a couple of times I told you about, I was doing a spreadsheet for my animals, I do have a copy of my cats and dogs, one for each, right now, I forgot to call for two more, and I'll, you know, I'll let you have these and you guys can look at them, and, but I still got the other sheets up there in my folders, that I've, I probably just tried to do it this way, and see what you guys think about it.
Okay.
I hope you guys have that, you guys can look at it. This is, tell you, of cats and dogs. Uh, we have neutered around three hundred animals this year for spay and neutering, and that's quite a few animals, and I will have to go back and see what I got in donations, if I can come back and get, uh, get a little bit more money, because I'm running short on it. Plus, we did, uh, you know, get all them spay and neuterings and a little bit of medicine and stuff for them, so I'll have to come, come back and get with you again next meeting, probably.
Yeah. Well, I've noticed the, uh, the veterinary claims that you've turned in reflects, must be quite a few, quite a few animals.
Yes. You know, we, uh, didn't know how many we did until after I started going back through there, and we did around three hundred animals this year, so far.
Yeah.
And I still have more to go, you know? Uh, but, uh, you know, I'll have to get, see how much I got in my donations and go from there. But, but like I said, whenever we dock them out, we put the money right back into the donations, that way the county's not out of money, you know?
Right.
So, all right, I'll see you guys a little later then on that.
Oh, okay, Dave.
Thank you.
Um, Chris Gattner from the Highway Department, do you have anything to report on today?
Oh, we, we did get our one forty-four turned in, I think, for a new guy.
Yeah, I have not seen that.
Okay.
What's his name?
Um, Cody Vaught. V A U G H.
V A U G H?
Maybe that's what it is. I don't know if there's a T on it, I thought there was a T on it.
Okay, there might be. He's going to be heavy equipment or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, that only makes sense, because I can use him for a truck driver or heavy equipment either way, so I kind of let's him fill two points there.
Could you say it was?
Cody Vaught. V A U G H D.
What was the last name?
Vaught.
Vaught.
V, V A U G H or G H D. He, um, lives down on one, south of town, just across the county line there, Shea Road and one, right there on the corner. I don't think he, he didn't grow up around here, I think he may have come from Sunland or something, but his wife had family in Franklin County, so that's where he landed. But, he's been a few times, he was in this morning, he's been to see Haley and got his paperwork done, so I think we're good to go, since we get through here, so.
I'll approve.
Second.
We've got a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the one forty-four request from the Highway Department, the hire of Cody Vaught as a truck driver.
As a heavy equipment operator.
Heavy equipment operator.
And they can do both jobs, they can do either way.
All right. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Um, have you had any luck finding a mechanic replacement?
We're, we've, we've got some applications, we're, we're still going through some stuff, so, um, I haven't brought that yet. I just want to make sure we're right there when we do something, we could, as right as we can be. I mean, there's a lot of good people out there, but, that's, that's quite a job down there, there's a lot of different equipment, a lot of, a lot of things going on, so, um, just trying to cross the right bridge here, that, so.
Yeah, how well we know.
Yeah.
Um, have you heard anything from, uh, contractor on our community crossings?
Yes.
Jobs lately?
Yes. Hopefully, we'll be through that shortly, but, uh, White's will call me, um, one day last week, I think, and said, they're slated for the second week of August, so hopefully we see them start pulling in here next week.
Okay, good.
And, uh, you know, we talked about that, I said, boy, I hate to see that right as school starts, you know, but, maybe that's on us, we could, when we do the grant next time, can, maybe we can move that date a little bit and try and get that covered while school's out, I don't know, but, I don't know how well that works, that's part of the things to come yet here, so, sure would be nice if we could accomplish that while school's out through the summer.
It would.
I don't, we'll have to see if that's an option or not, but, um...
I've never known what's going to happen, though.
Yeah, I figured that. Well, as you guys know, everybody in the county does, they told me they was coming the first of June, so we hurried up, put all them cans in, and now we've got, we've got rough roads that they're not very happy with me about, but, you know, I did, I did what I was told, and that didn't pan out the way, and, uh, things don't happen like you want sometimes, so it's just part of it, but, we're almost there, I think, so.
Okay.
Okay? Anything else?
I don't.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Surveyor Bill Mackey, do you have anything?
Not anything.
Uh, do you have any news on the, on the big culvert workout on four fifty-eighth?
Um, Mike was in this morning, he's getting it located, he'll be starting here shortly.
Okay.
Yeah, he'll get it located for utilities, and so probably next week or so, he'll, not later this week, he'll be out there.
All right, good, be glad to see that one get done. Um, county attorney not here, yep. We'll move on to mail, anybody got any mail they want to share? You got any old business you want to bring up?
Are you going to do Kelly's one forty-four? Kelly's one forty-four?
Since she's not, wasn't here, I...
Yeah, she emailed.
Okay.
The names of it.
Um, Kelly Van Meter's got a one forty-four request for the nine-one-one dispatch, this person here.
Three people?
Mm-hmm.
Are they full-time, part-time, or?
Part-time.
All part-timers?
Nope. What's your pleasure? I would approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the one forty-four request for nine-one-one Department for the hire of three part-timers, Savannah Pollitt, Kylie Osborn, and Lillian Posey. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Thanks for reminding me on that. Okay. And our new business, Mr. Brad Coulter, he's EDG Director, is here. Brad, you got anything you'd like to share?
I'm going to dig in here and find my speech. I don't have a speech, but I did write a note, because I'm getting old and I forget what I'm going to say. I wanted to tell you that, uh, I haven't seen you since I was here the first time, but I want to start getting in here every other month or so, if that's okay with you. Uh, I'm starting my fourth month, starting to feel like I'm getting a little bit of a hand on things and what all of our duties are at the Economic Development Office. We, uh, seems like I spend a lot of my time managing a building and a property over there more than I like, so we're, Dale's already heard, but we're trying to get out of that business. I think we have a interested buyer, looks like we're going probably into back downtown at one of these days, before too long. But, I've been, uh, I've had probably at least seventy-five meetings so far, just different people in the business, trying to understand who does what and what people do, I feel like it's a, a lot of little puzzle pieces, and I'm trying to put it all together, and hopefully it turns out to look like something when I get, but, we're also trying to be more visible, I hope that you are seeing that already, uh, more transparent, uh, we're not the CIA, I want to tell everybody what we're doing and let everybody know what our job is, and so people understand what goes on over there, and, uh, try to take more of a role in the community and be more, uh, visible and active with what we have going on. So, I've spent a lot of my time in these meetings trying to build relationships with people and, uh, find out who all our partners are in the different areas, you got, uh, some of the things that, I try to look at things through the lens of employers, what, what do employers look at, uh, at when they come to our community? They look at housing, they look at early care and learning, which is daycare, they look for livability issues, they look at, you know, what's your downtown like, what kind of, uh, how happy would their employees be living here? But, one of the biggest things is workforce development. I think that's what I've been spending the most time working on, is trying to put together, there's a lot of people out here that do training for employers, but it's all kind of unorganized, and we want to try to put together a round table and get all those people going in the same direction and not over-duplicating services. So, trying to develop, uh, workforce development, workforce training, uh, type of round table where we're talking to the employers and the employers are talking with the trainers to say, hey, what, what, what is it you guys need your employees to be learning, and we'll figure out a program and a way to teach them. And, uh, so that's, that's been a big thing I've been working on. We, as a, your local Economic Development Office, we are called Alito, we are a member of a RITO, Regional Development, and so every month, I travel somewhere to go meet with all those people and talk to peers about what they're doing, what kind of problems they have, and I've been trying to meet with those people individually, too, just to develop relationships and have people that I can call, if I have a problem, I know who I can ask, maybe how, how did they solve it? And, uh, so just trying to make friends, I'm starting to develop a program where we do BRI visits, which is Business Retention and Expansion, talk to all our local employers and see what it is they're having problems with, and what we can do to help them. We have a revolving loan, uh, program at Economic Development that we, where we have some funds we can loan out, we're getting ready to make our first loan that we've made in six years, and we have quite a bit more money, and I want to publicize that and try to get that money out on the street, creating jobs someplace. And, uh, I don't know, I'll tell you more on my next visit, but those are just some of the things that, uh, I've been working on, and I want to try to, I know that we're getting into budget time, and you've been into it, but, uh, just want to ask you to stick with us and see if you can find some money to help continue to fund us, and I hope that over the next year, I can show you that we have a real value to the community and we're, uh, working hard over there, trying to, uh, grow jobs and business, and help, help the employers that we already have stay. There you go. Anybody want to ask me anything?
The revolving loan, what kind of criteria is on that to get it?
Well, we have guidelines, and we just updated those so that we can loan up to a hundred and fifty thousand, and, uh, it is tied to job creation, so there's sort of a formula, uh, the guidelines, um, we're working with the local bank to go through the process of underwriting the loan, to make sure the person is able to pay it back, and then we will put some stipulations on how many jobs is that piece of equipment that they're going to buy, how, how much employment will that create? Yep, so we'll look at each one on a case-by-case basis, and, you know, things that make sense, we'll try to get that money out there working.
Is there a certain percentage on that interest rate? Is it the low one, or?
Uh, I think the guidelines are, if you borrow, uh, up to fifty thousand at three percent, up to a hundred and fifty thousand at four percent, so that's a nice little cut from what you've got to pay at the bank.
Yeah.
So, if anybody's inter, anybody hears that, interested, give us a call, we can give them the details.
Have I got anything else?
Thank you very much.
Well, Brad, you and I have been around for a while, and I admire your sand for taking on this job, and wish you ever success.
Thank you.
But, you know, it does seem like that we keep, um, bandering about the same issues year after year after year, especially on workforce development, and seems like nobody can get it to the spot where potential employers want it, and there's always somebody moving the gold, folks, in those respects, and the needs of all employers are not the same. So, uh, it, it's a tough world out there, here, got your work cut out for you.
I think a lot of it is to try to get a dialogue going with those people, so you can talk to them on a regular basis and see what they need. I went to Rushville to an interest-
Got your work cut out for you.
I think a lot of it is to try to get a dialogue going with those people so you can talk to them on a regular basis and see what they need. I went to Rushville to an interesting meeting that, I sort of had an idea in my head what I wanted to do and I went over there and found a meeting that was exactly that. They, they bring employers every month and all the trainers like Eastern Indiana Works and Work One, and they bring all those people to the same table and they just sort of discuss what the issues of the day are and employers tell trainers what they need. It's pretty cool how right at the table almost they come up with a solution to put together a program to train electricians or plumbers or, or a lot of times, one of the new companies in town, they need soft skills, just, you know, basic math skills and just to get people on the same page with their program. And ID Tech, I had a meeting with them the other day, they can pretty much on the fly design that and put it to work right away on the job site to help that company. So I think it's just mostly about communicating and be visiting with them every so often and, you know, keep in touch. Have them to where they feel like they could call you if they had a problem. But that's what we're trying to do.
Some similar to, Career Center does something like this too. They work with businesses to find out what they need within the employee, so that's what they are looking for in students and they'll recommend them for jobs. And they've done a lot through them, so they might be another connection for you to...
We have a lot of resources, but they are all doing, a lot of times they're duplicating, they're all doing the same thing and they don't talk to each other.
Yeah, so it's staying, talk to them.
Trying to get it organized to where you could spread the services out a little bit.
Yeah, be stronger.
Thanks a lot.
Good job.
Okay, good luck, Brad. Greg Clymer is here, representing Klein Computer Consulting for our Thoughtful Law Grant. Greg, do you have a resolution for us?
Yes, Commissioners, good afternoon, that's exactly the purpose of my being here. The resolution will authorize the County Commissioner's President to sign any and all documents required to submit the owner-occupied rehab application. That is due a week from this Friday on August 15th, so it's coming up. The other part of the resolution commits the local matching funds of $57,000. Source of the funds is County General. We are applying for half a million dollars, so this is roughly a 10% matching program. If you're familiar with the program, I won't go into all the details, but if you would like to know a little bit about how it works, I'm happy to fill in some of those blanks.
Well, for the benefit of those that will listen to this meeting from home, why don't you do that, Greg?
The, the maximum amount that we can use from this grant to help a homeowner rehab their home is $25,000. So at roughly half a million dollars in grant funds, if every home required the maximum, we're going to help about 20 to 25 homes, roughly, homeowners. What can we do? Of course handicap accessibility is one of those eligible projects, new roof replacement is eligible. We also do electrical upgrades, heating and cooling upgrades, and we can put in things like new water heaters and so on. We don't actually get into renovation of the structure other than roof replacement. So that is, in a nutshell, what the program's about. In order to be eligible, a homeowner has to live in the home, it's their primary residence, and they have to be income-eligible. For your county, those income-eligibility thresholds for a one-person household, that would be $47,550. Two people, $54,450. And it goes up from there adding a few thousand dollars for every extra person that lives in the household. So if their income is at or below the number that I just gave you, then they automatically qualify. This is a program where a lot of the programs Oakwood has, you have to have 51% low moderate income. This is 100%. Every homeowner that we help is going to be a low-income household.
And if we are awarded, when would, would you expect distribution of this?
The, the award announcement is roughly a month after the due date, so it's mid-September. It does take a little bit of time to, again, certify the homeowners who apply for the program. Every home is required to have an inspection, so we will hire a home inspector. And then every program, I'm sorry, every home in the program has to be tested for radon. So we have to acquire those services. To answer your question, I would say it could easily be, you don't like to replace roofs in the winter time, so I would say we're going to be doing construction maybe early spring next year.
Okay. Well, that ought to give any prospective applicant an idea of what to expect. I would...
We, we do have a public hearing that is next Tuesday, that's at 5:00 in this room. And I would encourage anyone who, who would like to apply or see if, check to see if they're eligible, to come to that meeting. It's informational as well as a way to gather input from the public for their benefit as well.
Is there a certain number that's going to be approved, like a cap on it, or is it just like, is it 10 or 50 or?
Oh, as far as applicants?
As far as applicants, do you have a limit?
Jolisa Bates is, I think, working with the applicants at this point. The community, the county in this case, can receive extra points in the application if you identify one of four critical categories. And I think you've identified that. So applications, I think we, we want to take as many as we can have people show up. It, it looks good on the application if you have greater demand than you have money for. And whether we take those on, whether those households qualify under the priority parameters or on a first-come, first-served basis, that's, we'll, we can decide that once we get the award.
Any more questions? Anybody in the audience got any questions or interest in this program?
Has the match been approved by council?
Yes. Mike came to the meeting.
That was the meeting, Mike was at?
Yeah.
I move to approve Resolution 25-R dash R dash five.
I'll second that.
Hey, we have a motion, Adele, second by Tracy, to approve Resolution 25-R dash five. Authorizing the application submission and local match commitment. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Okay, will you need a copy of this signed?
I will need a copy of that and there are about nine other documents, but I'll get those after the, at the end of your meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Okay. The syringe exchange program has been around for a month or so. Is there anyone here to speak on that today? Okay. Or last, or last month, the county health officer told us he, he wasn't declaring an opioid emergency. But it does seem that there is a way that the Commissioners can petition the state health commissioner for continuation of any program like this, this or any like it, as long as the need arises. Supposedly they are, well, hopefully able to take the politics and personal likes and dislikes out of the equation. So I think if, if we, now Jane, doesn't that program officially end this month or?
Yes, 14, 13th to 14th of March.
All right. There's been quite a bit of debate about it. I know that there is people that here in the county that still do depend and benefit from this program. So I guess the question is, do we want to petition the state health commissioner to take this matter up and derive a hopefully unbiased decision on it?
If we vote not to continue this now, can this be looked at at a later date to get back into it? I couldn't find anything in what I was looking through that said that, so I, I don't know.
That I don't know. I, I know from the beginning, the, the uptick in hepatitis C and HIV cases in the county was the, the original reason for implementation of the program. And the last stats that I see, it seems like the, those numbers are not as high as they once were, but they are still significant. So if people go back to using dirty needles, do those, do those numbers tick up or not? Is it worth the risk, you know? And you ask 10 people, you're going to get 10 different opinions about it. But it's, it's at no, no cost to the county. One of the area hospitals actually pays for the supplies. Evidently they see value in it, or they wouldn't be doing that, I wouldn't think.
It's my opinion based on the health department and their decision not to, that I would agree with them on that decision and I don't see that we need to move and try to push back on their decision because they had factual reasons why. We, we also have a lot of constituents who have communicated an opinion and you can get needles, you know, apart from a needle exchange program. So it, it isn't necessary, it isn't the only way, I say, to help people who might need a needle. And, I mean, I just, I, I don't see why we would go against the recommendation of our health department this way. They're appointed to do the work that's needed to be done and I think they've done that, they have a reason and they have reasons. I mean, I've communicated with them, I don't know if either of you did, so I know the reasoning behind the decisions that was made. So I would side with their decision and not want to go over their head and go on to the state level. That's my opinion, so my vote would be no, based on what you just shared, so it'd be up to you two.
Well, yeah, we've all heard varying opinions about it, that's for sure. I, I wish programs like this just wasn't necessary, but we know that they are. So personally, I have no objection to continuation of the program. I know that the, I think, Jane, didn't you share recently some, it was a recent executive order?
Yes.
That seems to jeopardize the harm reduction programs nationwide.
Yes, there was an executive order issued by President Trump that includes language that it will eliminate all grants for programs including harm reduction or safe consumption programs. You pass that.
And I haven't had any communication with anybody up here at the Connection Cafe since hearing about that to know whether or not, how and how soon or what, how they would be affected by this, I just don't know. I guess it all depends on where their pieces of funding comes from. But, you know, it's one piece of the community that not everyone needs, but some do.
I'll move that we petition the state to continue it.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Okay, I'll second the motion. There's a motion, Adele, seconded by me, to ask the state health commissioner, petition the state health commissioner to intervene in the needle exchange program for Fayette County and ask for its continuation. Any further question? Signif, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Firmed.
Motion passes, two ayes and one nay. Did you see the communication we got recently about the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy plan? Okay, what's your pleasure on that? Do we have any documents on that here, Jane?
I do not currently have that.
I feel we need to continue with the council on it, how they, they want to move forward.
It's my understanding that the, the law firm that represents us in this matter is recommending that we approve the plan.
So we'll make a motion and move forward with that, is it, what is it that we're saying exactly that we're joining a lawsuit? Is that what this is?
Continuing with it.
Continuing it?
Yeah.
All right, continuing it.
Second.
We have a motion by Tracy, seconded by Adele, to approve as recommended the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy plan that we received from, I can't even remember the name of that law firm right now.
Cohen and Malod. Cohen and Malod.
Cohen and Malod. Okay. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Now, we will have to notify them, correct?
Yes.
All right. Okay. We do have some, some bids in front of us for some projects that we've got going and want to try to get finished this year. You want to start over here at the women's facility? We talked about repairing that parking lot over there, taking a look at concrete. And that was terribly expensive. I did get a bid, well, we, we've previously approved using... Using this company from Richmond, All About Asphalt. To do our share of the city parking lot out here. And the city had already done their due diligence on area paving companies, and they. Had proved themselves to be. The most reasonable. In the area. So I asked them for a quote to do. The parking lot over at the women's correctional facility, along with the parking places between. That building and the courthouse annex, that whole little area over there. So they gave us this quote of forty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. And they said if we approved, they could possibly. Get to work on it by the end of this month. But they know that we have to have the concrete repair work. Over there that's got to be done first. So. We've got to take that into consideration too.
So we already approved them, this company, to do the, our part out here, and then this would be to do. Just the parking lot at the women's, right, to pave it?
Yeah.
After it's repaired with the other quotes that we're getting.
It would have to be. They'd have to mill it down. About four inches, and then replace it with. Twelve thousand nine hundred square feet of one and a half inch deep pavement.
And it's the alleyway I see too. And the small parking lot to the north of the alleyway, so that's more than I thought, okay?
That's, yeah, that's.
That's good.
Back there behind the. The annex building. That whole area there needs the work.
Yeah. So we just need to approve this, because we already know the work's been done to get the bid, to get bid for that?
If we approve this, then we can tell them to go ahead and be ready to schedule for that job.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve All About Asphalt for this.
Okay, another motion by Tracy, seconded by Adele. To approve. The bid from All About Asphalt. In a sum of forty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. To repair and pave this twelve thousand nine hundred square foot area parking lot. At three oh seven Central Avenue, known as the Women's Work Release and Jail Facility. Any further question? All in favor signify by saying aye. Here's that. Now, related to that. Job over there had two. Was able to get two quotes. For the. Sidewalk repair. And a little bit of concrete that had to go on the inside of the corner of the building over there. That has to be done before we can do the paving job. And I got a quote from Williams Creek, Williams Creek Excavating and Friendly Contracting. And.
Fortified Building.
Is that the one that the guy sent you?
Yeah. Right there.
Okay. Okay, here we go. Okay, the one. The one that we just received from Fortified Buildings. Is for seventeen thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars and seventy-three cents. The one from Williams Creek Excavating, five thousand six hundred fifty dollars. And one from Friendly Contracting, five thousand six hundred dollars. Quite a difference, one end to the other. So, do you want to consider these today? Mind you, we've got to have this done before we can do the paving.
Yeah. So if I, if we, I'd like to know when this job can be done. It's kind of part of the. Do you think that, I mean, when you look at the difference here, I don't know, he might be able to do it right away, and he may be six months out. I don't know how busy the one contractor was, is he able to get on this project right away? Or, because they're all waiting to open over there, based on us getting this done?
Well, I'll tell you what, if. If you want to, you know, since there's only fifty dollars difference between those two. If you wanted to, we might be able to legally. Stipulate. Between these two, that if you can't get to this job. Within a reasonable amount of time. Reserve the right to go with the other, because one depends on the other.
Yeah.
Now, that may be a Jeff Wesling question in the end, but.
That's what I would choose for myself, but that's based on that, that building needs to get, it's, you know, we're behind. We can't open until these things get done, so. It's really important to me, and I think that the sooner the better, so I don't know that, you know, if someone could tell us they could do it. Within a couple of weeks, or if someone's gonna tell us it's gonna be six months, that's gonna make a big difference. In who you choose, you know? So can we do that? Just table it until we know? Till we know the timing from these two, from the contractors, what they would say?
Why can't we just move the motion that we accept Friendly's bid, as long as he can do it within two weeks? If not, we go with Williams Creek, if he can do it within. The two week time.
Because we're already looking at September with that, two weeks. And then paving after, so. I mean, I'm good with that, if you wanna.
Sounds reasonable if the county attorney will let us tell us we can legally do that.
Okay.
I'll make that a motion. On Jeff's agreement.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Adele, seconded by Tracy. To. Approve the contract for concrete repair to Women's Correctional Facility from Friendly Contracting. On a conditional basis that it can be. Completed within a reasonable amount of time, that it will not hold up the paving of that parking lot over there. If that condition not met, commissioners want to reserve the option to go with the bid from Williams Creek Excavating. With the same consideration in mind. I don't know how you're gonna put all this in minutes, Jane, but it's, you know what we're going after here. Any further question? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Take care of that. Now, another thing that we got today relating to the women's work facility. Did you have a chance to read the letter we got from Scott Carnegie today? Okay. They have made. We have a letter of. See, it's got a name here. An additional service request. And this all has to do with the. Two-year delay that we've experienced in getting that project down over there. They submitted this. This additional service request. That pays them to contracted forty-eight hundred dollars per month for their services, even though. We're still waiting for. The work construction to complete all the details over there. And it has a. Now, on the signature page of this is, they're requesting that all three of us sign this letter. Jane got a cat hair in her nose. Probably something Dave brought in. While we're wading through this stuff. If I'm not being clear enough for you to understand what I'm talking about, just speak up and say so, and I'll try to. Do a better job of explaining what we're doing here. Does that make any sense to you?
I'll be billed to Thor.
Yep.
Now, that's part of the agreement that we would pay them, and then we have to go back on to Thor to collect that back.
Right.
That's just part of the final payment to DLZ.
Yeah, we will have to. Subtract this money from what we're retaining. Before their final pay application is approved, so. We'll have to. You know, that's how we get the money back. They're not gonna like it, but I think they've asked for it.
Yeah, DLCs do, I mean, they've been on this two years longer, and they contracted with us to be on the job, so. They deserve to be paid.
Yeah. Well, that's what, that's how their contract reads.
Yeah. So. We don't really have a choice to agree to that, as far as we have to do, and then we'll have to figure out how we're gonna. Like we said, get it from the people who really caused the problem.
Yeah, well, we still owe them over a half million dollars, so. That's. Before their final pay application number twenty is approved, all these things will have to be deducted.
So I'll move to approve for us to sign the letter for DLZ. Okay?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Tracy, seconded by Adele. To. Sign and approve the. Letter from DLZ. Or an additional service request. According to the owner-architect agreement the county signed a long time ago on this project. So we'll. We'll sign and date this before we get out of here today. And send it in and make sure you have a copy of it. Better vote here, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Here's that. Another thing I've got for you. I've got out of the four or five contractors I was able to contact that do this kind of work. I could only get bids from two. To do a couple of jobs up at Manloaf Park. And these are two different jobs, one is clearing, the clearing of. Approximately ten acres of ground for a sediment storage area. The other is for the. Breaching of the dam at the lake. To replace a drainage pipe and put it back. Now, the work on the dam, I just learned about three minutes before this meeting started. The DNR is going to require permitting on that work. Right this minute, I don't know how. How hard that's going to be. But I think anything we do here on this. If we accept either one of these, they should be contingent on the, our ability to. Get the proper permitting from the DNR in place. Because I don't want to get us in any trouble on this.
Are you okay if we, you know, I did contact another person that would be willing to bid this? Can we make this like a. Can we go ahead and do that also?
Is that a local?
Rushville, Rush County?
Rush County.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean, there, what's this one? Both Conner, is this Conner Hill or that one?
Yeah, both of them.
Are you wanting to stick with, are you choosing local on this?
I. Although we haven't announced what these bids are, now that they are in this public meeting, they are public. Information.
You haven't given them out, so, right?
No, I haven't said it here, but anybody in the room can ask, how much are those bids? And that doesn't set up a fair atmosphere for additional bids to come in. This is pub, Jeff, I got a couple of bids here on some work. Where have you been?
I've been in the honorable Judge Brensider's courtroom, fighting the good fight.
You ain't got any business up there, do you?
That's correct.
Okay. I've got a couple of bids here on some work. To do with the desedimentation project at the Manloaf Park.
Okay.
And. Two bids was all I was able to get. These are now in a public meeting, and Tracy wants to open it up. These are now in a public meeting, and Tracy wants to open it up for somebody else to bid on it.
I did, I did, with all due respect, share with you before the meeting that I had someone else that would bid this. I did.
The last minute is not the time to present.
Well, I didn't know about this. You hadn't communicated you're getting bids.
Okay, so, one, I'm getting a little late, so excuse me. Have we stated the amounts? I mean, I think your question is, I want to play, I want to play fair ball. I don't want to let somebody, have we, have we expressed any of the numbers on any of the bids?
No.
No, I haven't.
Okay.
Haven't said it.
And we want the more bids, the better.
Yes.
I would not, if we haven't said those bid numbers, I'm a bigger fan. We didn't give a bid deadline, correct? This isn't one of those where you had public notice and you had until noon on today's date to give bids, correct?
That's correct.
Um, this is kind of one, we sought out individuals to services to do it, correct?
Yeah. This requires people with the right equipment and right expertise to do this kind of work.
I am not a big fan like you of someone hearing a bid and then somebody going under it, right?
Right.
I think if, unless it's urgent, as long as you haven't given those bid numbers, I don't see anything wrong with seeing if you can get some more bids gathered up till next meeting. And of course, those bids could change. They could, we could lose, they could say that's no longer good. They could say it's going up. They could also say, hey, you're going to get third bid, maybe my number could go down a little bit.
True. You never know what.
I mean, I would, I would certainly, if you don't, if you don't advise them today and state them on the record today, I would let those two companies know that, hey, we're still looking for other bids. You're welcome to resubmit your bid. We'll keep it if you want us to keep that as a bid, or you can modify it any way you want. Does that make sense? But as a government entity, the more bids the better. I don't like, I like fair ball, though. I don't like everybody knows somebody else is bidding and bid under it. But it doesn't sound like, unless I missed something, we're in that position right now.
Well, when I was seeking the bids, I did, I was not sure whether DNR permitting was going to be necessary or not. I've just learned, just three minutes before the meeting, I got an email that says, yes, DNR permitting is going to be necessary. So that's going to delay the, it's going to delay any work that could have been done, for sure.
I think you're, you're moving your eyes to getting more bids. It's different on some of these public bids where there's a sealed bid and here's the deadline. I would feel totally different about that. That's not the case.
Since these are been thrown out here on the table, can somebody call in and ask Jane what the bids were?
No, I don't like that at all.
Okay.
We're asking for blind bids. We're not asking for you to compare. And now, unless, of course, you want to give all the people that are entitled to every bid you have. You called them, but I wouldn't do that. I'd just say, no, it's, you give me a bid.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to do anything.
If you let them know what the number is, I guarantee you they're not going to come substantially under it.
Yeah. I don't want to do anything to get us in trouble.
So we can just make a motion to the table until the next meeting? And then that'd give the time to get the DNR took care of and already started.
Yeah, who knows? I don't, I have no idea how long that will take.
I'll second the table.
Okay. We have a motion, Dale, second by Tracy, to table two bids related to the work at Manlo Park until our next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Okay. That wraps that up. Now, while you were away, Jeff.
It sounds like it was a fun meeting.
Yeah, it has been. We have a young lady here that has just graduated high school and going into pet grooming business. Dave, would you like to come back up here and bring, bring Ms. Gross with you? And explain what you're doing here now that the brains of the operation is here.
Makes me more nervous now, Dale.
Okay, now, Dave, Ms. Gross is one of Dave's volunteers at the animal shelter.
Great, fantastic.
And she's now wanting to start her own pet grooming business. And the question is, can she start her business at the county, at the animal shelter facility? So Dave, you had any details that you could need to?
What she will do for us is keep our animals clean and fresh to an extreme. You know, stuff like pet grooming, pussy. That's what she's giving to us. So we let her use the tub and the water, you know, the building while we're there and all that. She uses her own shampoo for her own animals. Ours will have our own, our own shampoo. You know, we're hopefully, you know.
But she does us a good service, is that's the only reason we're taking this. I mean, I will tell you, generally, letting a business operate under county property is not a good idea. And it isn't. I'm not ready to say 100% we can't do it. So if, if you want, my instinct in mind, I'm telling you, my very strong gut is that we legally can't.
Well, I knew you was going to say that.
If you want me to look into, see if I can potentially find a loophole, you can table it for two weeks and I'll see if I can find something. But I'm unaware of anything right now, and I could very, very strongly tell you it's going to be almost impossible. Not to mention, what happens, even if we find a loophole, what happens when three other people want to do it? And then you get somebody that wants to wash cars at the highway department. You know what I mean? Like it gets, and what I don't want to discourage is she's providing a great service for us because she loves animals.
Right.
But, but I certainly can't give the go-ahead without finding some kind of way to keep us out of trouble. Using government property is always pretty good.
Yes, it is. I would like everyone else wish her well. But I'm sure her competitors would consider letting her use our facility as a subsidization of her business interests. And they could come and demand the same, or protest anything that is done for her.
Absolutely.
And so since you're the official legal advice for this body, and we talked about this earlier in the meeting, I recommend it waiting till you got here. Make it official.
You have two options. One, my strong gut's going to be, I'm not going to be able to find loophole. Or two, you can table it. I'm pretty diagonally creative, and maybe I can find a way to make it work. But that's only if you do. And I don't know that, I mean, kiddo, it just, it's pretty tough on them because then they have people. I mean, it's just, it's a tough situation because they are going to have, I don't know what the pet grooming situation is in Fayette County, but you'll have people fired up about it. So, but if you want me to look for two weeks, if you want to at least see what your options are, I'll be happy to, till the next commissioner's meeting, I'll be happy to see if I can find anything that gives us some kind of ability to do it.
Plus, I was looking at this like, if we could do something, that'd attract more people to come up. And might get some more animals adopted or, you know, or word from the word out. That's, that's another thing I'm plugging out too. That's all new to me too, Jeff. I'm learning stuff on this.
I'd like to see books to look into, see if we can help.
And I certainly have no objection to that.
Sorry, motion.
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion.
Based on my gut judgment on this, I would not second that. Because even if you found a loophole, it's not wise for the county because it goes into trouble. Just as we explained, if you to come to me, I would have said, great, that's not a great idea. And I understand why. Because then everybody is going to want the county to basically help them, and it just wouldn't be fair. It'd be showing partiality or all kinds of stuff could be considered in that. And I do believe there's something in our handbook that goes against doing this, so I'll look for that. But I, I don't want to second that, so I'm sorry. I just wanted to get explanation why.
Okay, well, my emotions are sympathetic with Ms. Gross on this. My years of experience as a public official tell me that it's, in the long run, it's probably not the right thing to do or the best thing to do. So I guess your motion will die for lack of second. In the meantime, I certainly have no objection to, if, two weeks from now, if you have more information about this that you want to share, that's fine, you know.
And just, just so you know, to kind of take them off the heat a little bit, I'm a lawyer, so we're cold-hearted people, right? I'm not, I'm not, I'm going to be honest, even if I find a loophole, I'm going to tell them, look, you guys can do it, but my advice is not to, just because of the, it's just, as good as it would be and as neat as it would be for you, it would cause havoc and be unfair to other people. I think you're going to, I think though you coming and doing this, I think you're going to find a business and do real well out of it anyway. I don't think this is going to matter. But, but I did want to take the heat off them a little bit because behind closed doors, I must say, guys, you can, but don't, okay?
Well.
Like I said before, you know, don't, don't ask, you don't know. That's the way to find out stuff.
Hey, it's free advertisement.
Yeah. Okay. Well, if we, if anything changes in this matter, we'll certainly let, let you know, both of you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for listening and, you know, see what we can do or we can't do.
Okay. All right, then. Did you have anything that you wanted, needed to talk to us about today, Jeff?
Um, I do not. I'm trying to think. How, I don't even know where we're at. Are we past new business?
We're, we're down to claims and payroll.
Okay, so Purdue Farm, everything went smooth. You proved the bankruptcy plan, I presume?
Yes.
Yeah, then I don't have anything.
And they did choose to go ahead and go to the state for the needle exchange.
Okay, so what did they decide to do?
We're going to petition the state health commission.
Okay.
To consider continuation of the needle exchange in Fayette County.
Okay, very good. Oh, we'll see how that works out. I'm not entirely sure that's how that statute permits, but.
It is ambiguous, for sure. Really, it is to me. I'm not.
Right. And Dr. White's letter, it's not 100% clear what he got rid of when he did that. So a lot of it's ambiguous, but I think the intentions were not conveyed very well. So, I mean, we'll just, we'll see how it proceeds. It'll be interesting to see what the state says.
Yeah, well, okay, we'll see.
And added on top of that, I don't know if you guys have seen, I think there might be some directives to, from the federal government to get rid of such programs, which is a whole other can of worms. So it's all a lot of fun. You know, it's going to make a lot of money, lawyers.
Everything's interconnected, for sure. All right, that's, there's nothing else from you. Do we have any patron concerns in the room today? Anybody got, bring anything they need to talk about?
Yes, sir.
I live at 3047 South County Road 625W. And I had contacted the county highway department either June in regard to ruts and washouts. And I sent you, Mr. Stone, some pictures a couple of weeks after that. And you wanted me to contact you, but it hadn't been addressed. It has been addressed, but not completely. So I got a new phone, and I'm not familiar with how to use a camera on it. So I thought I would show up and bring it to your attention.
Okay. Could you state your name again, sir, for the record?
Michael Carrigan.
Yeah, I remember that, Mike. So do you remember anything about that?
We did go down there and do some work. We got off on good things and, uh, we probably will be down there to do some patch paving, but the paver's been down. Just yesterday, it finished getting fixed. Uh, and that's probably not the first place we're going to get to once we get back out here. But, you know, it, it's like I found out, nothing happens real quick here sometimes. Obviously not so, but, you know, I was forwarded an email, I think, from you. So I sent guys down there, and we went down there and brush cut it, which, that brush cut wasn't as complete, but we did go down there and try and open it up and then do a little other work down there. But that is as far as we've gotten, and that's just from time that we've had. So that, I think that's been an ongoing issue from way before me. You know, obviously, I came in December, so that road didn't get that bad since December. You know, it's been there for a while, and it's going to take a little bit to get it corrected. But we, we have been there as time permitted, but we just haven't got enough time to get there.
Okay, Mr. Carrigan, that's the guy we have to depend on to get this work done. So if, is that a commitment to get the guys back down there as soon as you can?
Well, I can, but, you know, I'm not going to say, I've been burned on dates before here already since I've been here. So, you know, when you say a date, and then the guy says, well, you told me this, it didn't, you know, may have rained, may have had guys sick, maybe we couldn't get there, you know, I can't, that's, that's hard to pin down an exact date, you know. I will tell you, I will do our best to get down there and get that in better shape. And that, that's the best I can offer you right now with what we have.
Okay, then, Mr. Carrigan, your, your job is still on the to-do list. So it may be partially done, but as soon as, whenever Chris can break up.
We have tried to help, you know, we went down.
Well, I appreciate what you've done, but it's just not completely addressed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I never told my buddy what it was. I've not thought of it since I got the picture, so I just don't know. But, you know, we've not, we've not said we were done, but we done what we could with the time we had.
Yeah. Well, it might be best then, before everybody leaves today, for you two to talk it over a little bit. Maybe you can get a better idea of what needs to be done down there.
All right, thank you.
Dave. Is there any other patron concerns in the room, Dave?
I'm down there on 325 East in Springerville, right there at the T Road. You can't really, barely see the stop sign until you get on it. And come around, it's going to turn right, then we are just laying over where you can't really see traffic that good. And if you pull out there sometimes, you've got to, probably whip yourself over there.
Is it 325 and Springerville Road?
Yes. I've about, I've about got hit a couple times there.
Are, is that on private property or is it in the right of way?
That's in the ditches, and the stop sign's right here.
Yeah, okay.
That's the end, probably see.
There's another job for you, Chris.
Sorry, Chris. But, yeah, that's, that's a little dangerous to come over there off your bike and cars coming up flying up that hill.
Especially when people coming from the east there in that curve. Anyone have anything else? Bob, you got anything? Okay. All that leaves then is claims and payroll.
Second.
And we've got a motion, Dale, second by Tracy, to approve claims and payroll. All in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Three ayes, Jane. As soon as you get a copy, I'll need to scan that and send it to them today. Don't lose that. That concludes our agenda for today, unless we're forgetting something.
Second.
There's a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to adjourn. All in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
For adjourned, thank you all very much.